All right, and it's Monday, November 20th, and 7:01 PM, and I'll call the Select Board Meeting to Order. And I would also like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and it will be posted on the YouTube channel. Called to order. Is there any public comment right off? Are we good?
I wanted to say something.
Okay.
Sorry, I had my video off. I see that you're bringing up the sales analysis report that you listened to last meeting. And I guess, looking at the valuations in Georgetown, I think, I mean, what struck me is that there's a lot of inequity in the home valuations now. The some are valued way below market and none valued at more than eighty-three percent of market, according to the sales analysis report. And the proposed revision to the valuations would take that from forty percent to one hundred and sixty. So you'd still have homes far below market, but you'd have over, according to his report, over half the homes would be valued at greater than their selling price. And one property would be valued at a hundred and sixty percent of what it could sell for. So it seems, and I'm new to this, but to me, it seems that that paper valuation that is being proposed really misses the mark. Because you want to assess properties as close to fair market value as possible. And that's because the whole intent is that each homeowner pays as close to their fair share of the tax burden in the town. And so, as the report said, since this is such a substantial increase in valuation, I, it would, I'm just curious as to, is that something that has to happen this year, or is it worthwhile delaying and doing a field evaluation? Which would really hopefully get at the inequities that already exist in Georgetown? And that the proposed paper valuation would just simply magnify?
It's, we're going to discuss, that's something we're going to be going over. We don't necessarily have to implement it this year. As we're still, we're still working that one over. So thank you. That's, that's what we're trying, we're working on tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Allison? No, she's, she's, you're still muted. Well, sorry.
She has to unmute herself.
I, yeah, I tried.
Okay, there you go.
Do I need to repeat my public comment from last time?
I don't believe so. That one should have been recorded. I'm very certain we.
It was not recorded for posterity, because when the power went out, we lost the audio, but it will be reflected in future minutes.
Okay.
So that's up to you.
I'll just do it again. Regarding the incident, the solid waste, the transfer station on October 1st, the Solid Waste Committee sent a letter to the Select Board that I'm sure will be reflected, either attached to this evening's minutes or later. Solid Waste Committee is disappointed that the Select Board did not show more support for the transfer station staff. As the letter said, "The behavior is unacceptable and does not reflect the spirit of our community." May I suggest that without the rule of law, no freedom, no liberty. If we allow angry aggressive behavior to stand without reprisal, it will become the norm. Let us instead nurture the kindness and respect that was shown by the transfer station staff in an effort to resolve the situation as it was happening. And the offending citizens should be asked to agree to follow the rules before readmittance to the transfer station. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments? I don't see any, so I think we can continue on now. Any items to be added agenda? I have none.
I have none.
Any items yet? Okay.
No.
All right.
Rich, do you have anything? Are you all set? I guess he's got nothing. He's not saying anything.
All right.
To you now.
All right, so our next item on the business will be Bill Van Tynen will be calling in as our assessing agent to go over some of the revaluation discussion we've had and moving forward. So when he hops in, we'll jump back, but we'll keep going.
Tyler, just so, I have a two-year-old really close by, and I'm on mute. And I have a whole bunch of screens open for the agenda items and the assessing. So if I need to speak, I will unmute myself, but if I don't, I just don't want Gus to be a big part of the meeting.
Okay. Though I hope we get to meet Gus sometime.
Roger.
So the next item of business would be the approval of, or the minutes for the October 24th Select Board Meeting for Review and Approval. At the last meeting, Rich had forwarded along some tweaks that needed to be reflecting on votes. And I incorporated those and were sent out to the board today.
I move to approve as amended.
I'll second it.
All right.
In favor.
In favor.
All right.
And Tyler, I'd like to also move that the letter from the Solid Waste Committee be added to the minutes on the, on the record.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
That way we know it's there.
And that's going to be added to tonight's agenda?
To tonight's. To tonight's. Minute or minutes?
No, 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 to the minutes, not to the agenda, but to the minutes that we just approved. That, that their letter be appended to those minutes.
Those minutes will be at the next Select Board Meeting, when we had, that would be on the 14th.
Ah.
And those will be coming up later. This is for back in October.
I wasn't paying attention.
Except that they sent the letter back in October. I'd just like to, I'd like that letter to be on the website. That's my point.
We can, I don't know. We can get it appended to either of the two sets of minutes you guys will be approving next week.
Okay, fine. All right. Okay.
But I agree, we'll get it on there.
Thank you.
And under review, we had the October 30 financials distributed to the board last week. And I believe Mary will be touching on those briefly in her report. Bill will be coming in a little bit later for the assessing items. Under correspondence, I'm going to be very brief tonight, and we can touch base on any of these items next week as well. FEMA did send a letter notifying the town of their intent to map the St. George and Sheepscut watershed. There are going to be some informative meetings next Tuesday and Wednesday, and I can get links to folks who may want to join a Zoom in the middle of the day. The State of Maine Revenue Services has sent a certified letter regarding personal property taxes. Personal property taxes are the items that businesses hold as part of their assessed value. Historically, the town of Georgetown does not assess personal property taxes, and Maine Revenue Services encouraging us to do so. There was an October incident report from the Saginaw County Sheriff's Office. In October, there were thirty-one incidents. There was a high of six calls for suspicion. The good news is there was only one traffic violation in town. So good job Georgetown. We also had a bulletin from MMA regarding a general assistance training. It's in person on Friday, December 8th. I know Rich, Mary and I are planning to attend, and I wanted to see if anyone else on the board was available. Not that you have interest, because I know you guys all want to, but I know you're busy.
I'm busy, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
No, sorry.
Okay, so it'll be the three of us. I also, this is another thing that I believe will be touched on in Mary's finance report. The Maine Municipal Health Trust sent a letter updating the rates, and those are for the upcoming year. And we also received a few letters of funding requests from Lifelight and New Hope of Midcoast Maine. We'll be passing those on to the Financial Advisory Committee. And the last item of correspondence was Tedford Housing's Fall 2023 Newsletter. It was a good read about some good local resources, and I'd be happy to share copies of that as well. Under other correspondence, if there were no questions, we had none. As with continuing items, and I think I can get through this administrator update before Bill joins us. So if any questions stop me, but if not, I wanted to briefly let the board know that I accompanied Chris Will Cox and our Emergency Management Director and John to sites on Marktown Road and the flying, near Flying Point Road back on November 9th for a FEMA site visit. They're in the early stages of assessing our responses to some damages from the Mayday storm, and we're hoping to recoup some funds on the repairs. Additionally, on the 14th, John, Charlie, Jeremy from Pine Tree Engineering, Christine Whalen from MEMA, and I went to the Robin Hood Road for the culvert replacement grant that we're also applying through with FEMA. FEMA's national folks attended virtually. The good news is that I have been assured our grant is now on the desk in Washington, working its way towards final approval. At the time of last week's Select Board Meeting, I was told we'd have confirmation hopefully by Thursday. I imagine there's some Thanksgiving slowdown down in DC, but a lot of progress, and I think John can attest, they were very optimistic about next steps.
Yes, very.
And additionally, two weeks ago, John, myself, or two weeks ago, several weeks ago, we met with leadership from Sheepscut Island Company regarding the Macluhan Resolution the board had put forward. Last week, the Legislative Council met and voted seven to one not to admit the bill proposed by Representative Hepler in this coming session of the legislature. The town is continuing its dialogue with the folks at Sheepscut Island Company and our area legislators, and are looking at the possible 132nd legislature. And we're looking at a possible January meeting with some of the folks that I outlined to continue those good dialogues. I wanted to briefly just let folks know, we haven't had much downtime here at the office in the lead up to commitment. But I have been working on trying to update our town website to make things a little bit more user-friendly. I've also added a town calendar on the website where we're starting out on the early side of things with town meetings and the like, where the public can go on any time of day and see what's available, what's not, and what they may be interested in. My only ask is in the next week or two, before Christmas, if board members would take a look at the website and let me know what things they'd like to see different, and also what ways we could improve, because I'm hoping post-tax is post-commitment, that's something we can bring into the 21st century a little bit. And lastly, real quick, voter turnout at the election was just over fifty-two percent. I wanted to say, well done, Alex and our election team. They really kicked some serious butt. I did attend the public hearing at GCC regarding the aquaculture license. It was a big turnout, and we're waiting to see what comes from DMR. And the last two things I just want to briefly touch on while we're waiting for Bill, I promise this is not a filibuster. I did attend the MCAG Conference virtually on Thursday, and I imagine that's Bill Van Tynen now. One moment. And we're going to see if you will be picked up on our mic. Will you speak?
This is Bill.
Bronwyn and Rich, can you hear me okay? Can you hear Bill okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Bill is joining us via the phone tonight, because he is in Bayleyville. And so it's way down east, but we're very appreciative for him to be here. So I will end my report there with, just to circle back, and we can jump in with Mr. Van Tynen.
Tyler, or John, could we ask Bill to address Pam Gannell's overriding concern about whether or not valuation in Georgetown is currently fair? She is looking at documents and suggesting, I think Bill saw the letter, which suggests to her that some properties are valued at twenty-eight percent of market value and others at a hundred percent. And how is that fair? I imagine there's a misinterpretation somewhere, because I believe that the valuation has been strictly according to Hoyle. But it would be helpful if Bill could speak to that issue, just quickly before we move on.
Did you hear Bronwyn, Bill?
I didn't hear real well.
Okay. Effectively.
I'm hearing you real well.
Well, that's a good. That's a.
I turned up my volume in my car a little bit. I'm in my car on the phone.
So last, last Tuesday, I had forwarded along the letter from Pam Gannell where she outlined her thoughts and concerns with the valuation process here in Georgetown. In particular, wanting to touch on, and I believe what Bronwyn's looking for some clarity on, is the overall fairness of the Georgetown valuation. Is that correct, Bronwyn?
Yes.
And if you'd be willing to just touch on that briefly before we jump into mill rates and taxes.
Well, there's, there's two primary statistics. Um, the ratio and the coefficient of dispersion. And the ratio obviously is much higher and closer to a hundred percent under the modifications I made. And on total land and building sales, the coefficient of dispersion, as it is now, is twenty-three point zero two. And under the updated appraisal schedules would be twenty-two point five nine. So there's a very slight increase in equity, not very much. But statistically, at least for the middle seventy percent of the sales under which in main state law or practice you generally use for calculating the coefficient of dispersion, it's slightly better. Not very much better, but a little better than it was under the old system. So I think both are, in terms of fairness, about the same.
Does that answer your question, Bronwyn?
Well, dispersion, as a term, indicates how fairly the tax burden is distributed across the residential tax base. Is that true? Is that accurate?
Did, were you able to hear Bronwyn, Bill, or would you like me to restate?
I couldn't hear her very well.
I, I believe Bronwyn was looking for you to explain dispersion a little bit more clearly to make sure it kind of jives with her understanding on it creating equity throughout the town.
So a coefficient of dispersion is also called by the State of Maine, or in the State of Maine, a quality rating. And for the middle seventy percent of sales, it calculates, the study calculates the absolute deviation from the average ratio. And then the individual deviation for each sale. Then it figures the average deviation from the average ratio. And in the end, it divides the average deviation by the assessment ratio, and that number is the coefficient of dispersion or quality rating. And state law suggests that a quality rating be less than twenty, which both your existing land and building sales ratio and the one that I proposed, neither one of them are less than twenty. They're both a little above twenty, but I, I think that's a function of the great diversity of property types and neighborhoods or bodies of water that you have in Georgetown. I can't say that if I did a complete revaluation with an inspection of every building, that I'd come very much better than a coefficient of dispersion of twenty. I don't know if that answers it, but it's a, it's a measure of how how close each individual ratio statistically is to the average ratio. The higher the number, the more deviation there is around the ratio. The lower the number, the closer all the ratios are to the average.
Does that help?
Thank you. I think that's all the time we have for that discussion tonight. It behooves us to provide an educational forum for our residents as we contemplate any type of revaluation or understanding that how valuation is done. But I, let's move on. Thank you. And thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Hey, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that I'm just a technician on this. I'm not advocating one thing over the other. You can commit to taxes on the old values. You can commit to taxes on the new values. Neither method is going to offend me in any way. I'm really not advocating one or the other. If you, you also could take a pause and go with the old values and take a little more time to evaluate the new values, or even include whatever sales come in between now and next spring or a little later than April 1st. Just see how it's hold, see how it looks then against another year of sales. It makes no difference to me. I'm just the number cruncher. The, I'll do whatever you want.
And we definitely appreciate, Bill, that we asked you to help find a path on how could we fix this certified ratio? And you definitely showed us what paths are out there. The question now for the board is, you know, the timeline, et cetera, but I believe Rich had a question, and so I don't want to talk too much when he can speak better than I can.
It's more of a statement, Tyler, that at the end of the day, regardless of our valuation is on the older than new.
Hey, Rick, if you can speak up a little louder, I might be able to pick up a little better.
Okay. Or Tyler, can you manipulate the receiver closer to the speaker?
I'm going to take you right up to the microphone. This is the prices right there.
Hey.
Can you hear him now?
I think I can hear you a little better.
Okay. From, from my understanding of this process, from the town's perspective, when we commit taxes, if we use a valuation that is seventy-four percent, which is the current number, and it's tracking downward, that the state is going to get that report within thirty days or so of us committing taxes. And at that point, our homestead exemption and our military exemption will be impacted because we're outside of the parameters the state expects towns to be. So we, now the, the second half of this is our valuation and our mill rate, while it certainly matters, it does not impact someone's tax burden. The town has to raise the taxes that it owes. We have to commit taxes, and we have to hit that target. And if we're on the old valuation and our taxes go up one point one points, or whatever it's going to be, we're going to collect those taxes from people at the old rate of nine, you know, it'd be nine or a little bit better than nine, mill rate would be nine. So if we have the new reevaluation, the state will accept that it's above ninety-five percent or ninety-six percent, and we will get one hundred percent reimbursement from the homestead exemption and the veterans exemption. So while the, the tax burden will not change, we'll have a lower mill rate, but we'll have a higher valuation. But the amount of taxes that I can expect to pay for my property on Saginaw Bay Road, it's going to be the same if my property is worth three hundred and sixty thousand dollars or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The only thing that will change is the mill rate we're setting. Is that accurate?
Um. A couple of things.
Okay.
Really tell you how the veterans, the veterans exemption is reimbursed from the state. I think it's very complicated and it varies with the war periods that a veteran served in. On the homestead exemption, the state reimburses for this year seventy-six percent of the lost revenue, tax revenue from the homestead exemption. And that really doesn't change based on the ratio you're at. The reimbursement rate is still seventy-six percent. But if it's, if your, if your assessment ratio is ninety-six percent, you'll, the homestead exemption will be at the full amount of twenty-five thousand. If your ratio is seventy-four percent, it's going to be, which is what you declared in your declaration of ratio declaration back in May or June. It'll be seventy-four percent of the full homestead exemption of twenty-five thousand dollars. But again, it's going to be a higher tax rate if it's seventy-four percent. It would be a lower tax rate if it's a hundred percent. How much that would change your reimbursement from the state is probably not very significant on the homestead value. Another impact, and this isn't a big impact in your town, but tree growth values would be adjusted by the assessment ratio too. But you don't have a lot of land in tree growth. If everybody went up exactly the same, the tax with or without an update would not change very much. I think that was one of the points you were making. There is a little bit more of an increase on the, on the waterfront properties under my proposed valuation update than there is on the non-shorefront property, not significant, about five percent on the land value. So there, there might be a little bit of a shift onto waterfront property owners. Did I answer your question, Rick?
Yeah, I think you did, Bill. I'm just, I guess I want to calm the fears that while we have a reevaluation, in the big scheme of things, the tax burden will not shift very much. And I think it's really.
I think it'll adjust just a little bit.
Right. And so there will be some shifting depending on where your property is located. But our tax burden isn't going to change. So we're going to set a mill rate that is going to pay the bills. And I think there's been a lot of concern that if our valuations double. And I think there's been a lot of concern that if our valuations double, that our tax bill's gonna double. And our tax bill actually will only have to cover the difference, the delta between the last year's bills we had and this year's bills we have.
The, the one thing that I, I think will confuse people a bit is that there is a value, valuation increase if we're gonna try to be at very close to a hundred percent. There also is, and Mary can uh, I think, do this better than I can. You have more than needs to be raised by taxation this year than last year. So um, if there was no change in the valuation, your tax rate is going to go up. Your tax rate um, with or without an increase in the valuation is going to be up higher than it would have been last year based on last year's valuation or this updated valuation because you've gotta raise more by taxation.
And that's.
Is that right, Mary?
Yes, that is correct.
And could we hear from Mary and Tyler about the numbers they ran on what this act revaluation, given the current budget that was approved by the voters last June, what that would mean in terms of actual taxes? Because we did receive worksheets showing um hypothetical tax bills for a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, and they were certainly not the same as last year.
Okay, so we did, uh, Tyler and I have done a couple of different scenarios. Um, Tyler had done up a scenario, hold on, I'm just trying to track it. Um, that showed um, you guys should have this, it's dated one eleven thirteen, um, where he did um property values um changing from a, or a hypothetical property of a hundred thousand with our hundred percent ratio um showing uh with a current mill rate, eight dollars and uh eight hundred and eighty-four dollars with an estimated rate with a new valuation um of nine hundred and seventy dollar tax bill. So unfortunately, um, what I can't give you is um what the actual mill rate would be because Bill has to go into our system. If we approve going with these valuations, they need to be updated into our system and we need to run these numbers. We currently ran numbers on the current valuations and gave you, I don't know, five or six different scenarios on that. We're unable to run numbers um on the new valuations. We can only estimate. And I had estimated based on what I have for my calculations for a mill rate to go from eight point eight four to four point eight five. That was my estimation at the time. Um, but again, I can't go all the way through the process to come out to a tax rate calculator, which is what takes out all of the exempt, uh, the exempt uh properties, takes out all the homesteads. Um, and those I, you know, that would be exhaustive trying to do sixteen hundred accounts um without that data. So um, so right now, all we can do is best guess that if we went with these valuations, our value, our mill rate would drop from eight point eight to four point eight. So that's all, I mean, that's, that's the best we can do at this point is estimate.
And, and was the conclusion of your research that property owners who had exemptions, veterans, homestead, tree growth, that they would fare better or worse if we implemented revaluation at this time?
Looked to me like they would be worse.
The, what we were looking at, that with the factor of the waterfront shifting a little bit, right, it wasn't an automatic overnight double, which is why the hypotheticals were just that. There are certain circumstances where there were folks in town that their eighteen thousand five hundred on a homestead exemption out of, let's say, a hundred thousand dollar property would go a little bit further than twenty-five thousand on roughly that property turning into two hundred thousand. Though again, those were really trying just to capture and show the board how the exemptions can stretch depending on the type of property. But really, to Bill's point and talking with Bill, that is gonna be a very marginal piece of this. And that's kind of what we realized diving in to that. Did that kind of make?
One further question. If we, we have, we have certified evaluation as of whatever date that was. If we revalue according to the formula that Bill has applied, will that change the homestead exemption for this tax year that we will be billing for in December?
Yes, because it, because if you go with Bill Van Tynan's uh updated valuations, we will be petitioning Maine Revenue Service to change our val, change our certified ratio from seventy-four to one hundred.
And can you give us any way to evaluate the cost to the town of deferring revaluation to the next fiscal year?
And when you say cost from, what, what are you referring to?
Well, Rich seems to feel there's a cost. Who is that cost to? It's about exemptions. Is it about anything else? Um, I guess, is there any way to know the cost? The cost to an individual taxpayer in losing the hundred percent valuation is really only losing the full value of an exemption.
Right.
And it's my feeling that given the reaction in other towns to this dilemma um and the fact that our residents are no more likely to understand the assessing process or the setting of a mill rate than the average person in Brunswick. It's my feeling that we would, we would do well to go with the valuation we have and institute a serious educational program to bring the taxpayers of Georgetown, who are basically pretty intelligent people um into an understanding of what's involved. It'll also seems to me that it is, as Rich pointed out, confusing to the average person that their valuation will have increased a lot. The mill rate may go down, but the tax bill is going up. That's partially, at least mostly, because they approved an increase in the budget back in June. I think it would be healthier to let the valuation stand, increase the taxes to cover the bills that they approved and then deal with valuation and a new budget, which either reduces or conforms to um what they previously approved. I just think that would be a more acceptable, understandable route to our residents without damaging seriously anybody. That's my thought.
If I may, John.
I don't think there's anything wrong with what you said. Uh, I think it might uh help gain understanding to uh have a public hearing or to send out a newsletter or something and let people know that we've got to do this uh for a variety of reasons. The one, for the next year, uh, the sales ratio study that the state has done is, I forget exactly what it was, but it was between, it was in the sixties.
Sixty-two, Bill.
Okay, and there, there is a standard of seventy that the state says we need to assessments have to be at at least seventy percent. So um, you would be not meeting that standard next year um based on the most current sales ratio study that's this, the state has done. But uh, uh, one other thing that I, I'd point out, and I started to point it out before, but I never really made the point. People are gonna get confused where you're gonna have a tax crease anyway, a tax increase anyway this year because you have to raise more money. I think it's always almost preferable if you implement a large scale valuation increase when the budget hasn't changed much from the previous year. And people can see mostly not an increase from the amount to be raised by taxation um and confuse that with the increase that might have resulted from the valuation increase. This year, you're gonna have an increase if you go with the new valuation from a somewhat, I think, sizable increase in the budget or the amounts that need to be raised by taxation plus a valuation increase. That some, a lot of people will just assume it's from a valuation increase and object to it when maybe it's not.
Right.
Uh, Rich, do you have something to add to that?
Well, I do, and I was gonna bring up that point of the, the stated expectation of the seventy percent valuation. And we have an opportunity now to, to reconcile the books and bring our valuations back to a hundred percent. And as a select board, we made the budget and we spent on very, uh, uh, we were very generous with our budget last year. And now we're being asked to make a hard decision and we don't wanna do it. And we, the, the valuations have changed. Our spending also has changed. We went from a pretty flat budget for years and now we have a huge tax increase because of the amount we put in reserve funds, this county budget increase, etc. So as Bronwyn said, sure, the voters approved it at a town meeting, but last year, that budget was, was uh, hopefully it doesn't happen again. So we got ourselves into this predicament. When we're at seventy-four percent, we should take Bill's advice because next year we're tracking to sixty-two percent. We're even gonna have a greater revaluation. And, and how far, how long can we kick this can down the road un, until we make it right?
I'm next.
Oh, yeah. We have the numbers and we're here and, and we really should make the hard decision and do what we need to do.
I'd like to hear what John thinks.
Well, I, one way or the other, we are gonna have to do the reevaluation for sure. Um, I just don't know if right now with the public backlash that we're probably gonna get from it, whether now is the time. We've also got, like Bill was saying, if we can wait rate and redo the, start redoing the paper reevaluation after like April first and get the, whatever other sales we get in, because I know there's a couple other big ones that have gone through or are in the process of going through to get those numbers to see if it's leveling off or getting anywhere closer to, to what it's supposed to be. Um, I'm, I'm, would be of the, um, I would wanna do, I would just as happy going on our current evaluations and probably throwing in some sort of, uh, some sort of paper or some sort of a thing in with the bills, letting the people know that we are gonna redo a reevaluation and that they can expect their valuations to obviously go up. And, you know, once again, until we know what the next year's budget's gonna be, we can't say what the, what the um taxes are gonna be. Um, so that, I mean, that's, that would be my, my um choice and probably to be, what my choice would be to go with the current evaluation and then take, as Bill said, start the, go through the reevaluation as of, say, April first, when we know we're gonna have some more numbers to see if this is gonna level off or changes at all or just, you know, see how it works. I mean, that's, that's, that's my opinion on the, on the subject.
Jonathan, if you would make that a motion, I would second and vote for it.
So that would be, I would, okay, mine's, nope.
None of those.
None of those.
So Bronwyn, are you looking for Jonathan to make a motion to keep the current valuation as the basis for our mill rate?
Yes, and to include in this year's tax bills uh, an explanation of the situation that we are in and the need to revalue before the next town meeting or before, at the next town meeting for the next fiscal year. So yes, to maintain, to, to establish a mill rate based on current valuations, inform the public that we will need to revalue and
We will be.
That we will be revaluing. Yeah, that, that would be my preference.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what, yeah.
When I see how I need to.
Right.
It, it's good to make sure I get it right.
Yeah.
One of the handy cheats that I used to do is I always just say so moved.
Yeah, well.
I want to proceed.
Yeah, we'll get it. I'll get, I can't keep track of that in my head.
When you, when you say so moved, it puts it on the recorder of the meeting to phrase the motion.
True, well.
But I'm just saying, you know, it's fine. I like that you wanna know what you're moving.
Make sure I do it right, that's all. And get everything that we close.
Very close.
I bet you're getting tired of sitting in your car, Bill.
I hope I don't run out of gas, actually. Pretty cold.
I was gonna say, I hope you have the heat on.
Okay.
I hope you have the heat on.
All right, I move that we proceed the current valuations um as the basis for this year's mill rate with revisions for education to or for the taxpayers included in the packet, the bills.
Second.
Any discussion, any discussion about it?
There is discussion.
Okay.
On you and Bronwyn both spent like drunk sailors. Every time I tried to calm down, putting in for a reserve fund, Bronwyn immediately made a motion to double it. And we, we spent a lot of money last year irresponsibly, knowing that the county bill and the education bill was gonna increase. So i, if I, I'm not gonna support leaving the valuation, you guys need to do the hard thing and you need to step up. And you, you can't kick this can down the, the road forever and, and.
And we're not going to because it's gonna be done next year.
So, and the valuation's gonna be at sixty percent and the, the valuation of these properties are gonna go up even more. And that's what's gonna be the ramification of what you're doing right now. It's gonna go seventy-four to sixty-two. And people are gonna have property values that are even higher.
You know, Rich, I really think it's appropriate for you to state your opinion, but not to criticize John or me for having a different one. I understand that you disagree with us.
Bronwyn, we're, we're going in a bad direction. We had flat tax bills for years and last year we spent irresponsibly.
And flat tax bills got us into this situation, not spending like drunken sailors, which we did not do.
All right.
But thank you for your opinion.
Okay, can we vote on it then now?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion then?
Tyler, do you have anything to add? Mr. Van Tijden, anything to add?
Bill, can I ask one, can I ask one clarifying about the sixty-two percent next year? If the town were to move forward with this revale next year, we would be able to catch that before that sixty-two kicks in, correct?
I would be looking at sales through April first or, or so of next year. Plus whatever has occurred since this April. And I would uh, consider those sales and it might verify my proposal that I made so far, or it may have to be, depending on which, where the sales uh, go, it might have to be increased uh, a little more than it is now.
E- exactly.
Or possibly less if things turn around.
But to, but to clarify.
I don't see things turning around right now.
But to clarify, we aren't locked in at the sixty-two percent ratio next year. We can work to fix that.
You'll get a declaration form from the state that says your ratio appears to be sixty-two percent. And next year you would reply uh, if everybody agrees to update the valuation, that we are going to update the valuation. Here's some statistical measures of where our ratio is right now, based on adjusting our appraisal schedules and we declare a ratio of a hundred percent.
Just like we would have done either way. Okay, no, that's what I thought.
Thank you.
So, so, um, vote on the
So now what you have in front of you is a sheet.
We probably should vote first on whether or not to proceed or not.
Oh, sorry.
And then after the vote, then we'll get to that.
Yep.
So vote on the motion on the table. I'm for it.
I am too.
And those opposed.
Those opposed?
Mr. Dawson, you need to check in.
Thanks, Mary. I was trying to find the damn unmute button. Oh, absolutely no.
And opposed is Rich. Motion carries two to one. So now we're, we're Mary.
Okay, so in your packet, Tyler and I had prepared for you, um, you have a, a mill rate scenarios with current valuations.
Are we gonna set the mill rate tonight? That was gonna be the next meeting. That's what we agreed to on the, the last meeting in October. We were gonna get numbers tonight at the se- the first meeting in November and we were going to make a motion at the second meeting in November.
Okay.
First meeting in November.
Okay.
All right.
Do you wanna wait till Tuesday night to set your mill rate?
What is the purpose of waiting till Tuesday night if we have decided the basis for setting the mill rate?
I would like to be in the room so I can look at numbers, ask questions with the numbers in front of me. And I'm not there now and I knew that when I agreed to at the end of November to push to the second meeting in November. I, I make it a point to be at every meeting. Unfortunately, the last meeting I had to fly out, see my sister and I'm, I'm still in Oregon.
Right. You did miss the previous two meetings where you abstained on the minutes, just pointing out.
Okay, and once again.
This is Bill. At this point in time, uh, are you finished with me? Uh, for the evening?
Uh, I believe so. Yes, we are, Bill.
And we really appreciate your attendance from a car in Bayleville.
You were the hero of the night.
Sign off if it's okay with everybody.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much for including me in the meeting and uh, if, if anything does come up uh, that you need me at, at a certain point tonight, don't hesitate to call me back. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
I have no objection to setting the mill rate next week. I will be looking at the figures on the screen as I am tonight, but they are the same on the screen as in print. However, we said that last month, we can do it that way.
Do you want to make a motion to that or are we just gonna do it? We're all set because we
What we can do is we can, we've done that. We can add it to old business for the next meeting.
Okay.
To set the mill rate.
Perfect. Sounds good to me.
All right. So now we'll jump back in to the
I think you were almost wrapping up.
Perfect. I had one item left in the town administrator update and it was in regards to tomorrow night, there will be a housing forum with age friendly at the Georgetown Community Center at seven PM. It was an invite historical society. I keep messing those up ever since
I don't know why, but yeah.
GA, at the historical society. My recommendation, at least currently, would be that one board member attend, at least at this early stage. That way we don't have to worry about posting a meeting as a select board meeting. That's not, I know I was talking with Rich just prior to the meeting about working with MMA on getting some good verbiage. So we might not run into that problem in some other settings. But ideally, I was hoping tonight that the board would designate a member to go. Full disclosure, I had hoped to attend tomorrow night, but I am on airport duty picking somebody up tomorrow night for the Thanksgiving holiday. So I won't be able to make it.
I'll go to it.
Rich is in Oregon and I am in Ithaca. So I think Jonathan
I already, yep. I'll do it. That's what I was, I was planning on it.
Thank you, sir.
And Bronwyn, thank you for the hope because that was the end of my report and I would gladly turn this over to Mary.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, um, I just have a brief meeting. Um, first it started off with the mill rate stuff and that Tyler and I have spent a great deal of time reviewing documents, um, talking with Bill. Um, and it, you know, my recommendation thankfully is to do exactly what you did. Um, it would give us time for the residents to become informed, ask questions and be included in the process. Um, it also gives us the time we need to educate them on why we are required to do it. It is not, we do not have a choice. It has to be done. Um, but it gives us the chance to, to let folks know, um, and to explain it to them. Um, the other thing I had on my report was, um, Chris Will Coxon as EMA Director and the, uh, and the, uh, E nine one, E nine one one addressing officer. Um, I'd like to, to talk to you folks about, um, I've asked him to keep track of his time and I'd like to talk to you folks about reimbursing him. I don't necessarily think it needs to be handled at this meeting. Um, but I'd like you guys to consider it and place it on your next agenda. Um, October financials were sent out. Um, and you, you had those packets. Um, the school, uh, committee or, or, uh, the chairman of the school committee has reached out to let me know that the, um, firm that handles the business side for the Georgetown School Department will be getting done, um, with us in, on January thirty-first of twenty-four. Um, uh, so they are in the process of looking for another, um, match there. Um, and they are also requesting that we double up on a, a, a couple of payments to the school. Um, so that they have a bunch of funding, a bunch of cash available. I've explained to them that, that for me right now, that is not happening. And that's not possible. I am strapped for cash until tax bills start rolling in. Um, but I will work with them if, if we can, um, to, uh, you know, to do what they need to do, um, to make it work on their end. Um, May Municipal Employee Health Trust has let us know that there are, there will be increases effective, um, January one. Um, that really affects us by about, um, a hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-one cents a month. Um, based on what the, the select board has, uh, offered to the employees. So, um, you know, about twenty-five hundred dollars a year, um, not that material at this point. Um, the other thing is, um, upcoming, there's two classes I'm interested in taking. One is on HR on November thirtieth. I think I'll wind up being, Alex is out of the office that day. So I think I'll wind up doing that one on Zoom so that, um, Tyler and I can be in the office. And then the other is the GA conference on December eighth. Um, so which Tyler already explained about. Um, and other than that, after taxes are committed and all that stuff, I would like to take, um, a little bit of vacation time. So, but other than that, I think that's everything on my list.
My God, Mary, vacation? Are you sure?
Indeed. Yep.
Are you going to Hawaii?
Uh, yes, actually at some point, Bronwyn, I probably am, yes. But that's not what I meant for this one.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. So
January is a good time in Hawaii.
I know, I know. For everybody that doesn't know, my daughter, my, my daughter is now in Hawaii for three years, just went down in September. So that's why Bronwyn knows I'm headed at some point. So, yes, but that's all I've got. So.
Any questions for Mary? See you none. All right, we're on to committee updates. For the minutes, there were none to report currently, but I did wanna let folks know, we've received the Conservation Commission and they will be on the next agenda next Tuesday. And additionally, under membership, there's nothing to report here tonight, but I just wanna remind folks that are newly appointed to stop by the town office so they can get sworn in to make sure they can take part in town committees. Though we now have everybody, I believe, caught up to that. And with that, I would turn this over to the board for their liaison updates.
Um.
Do you wanna start, Mr. Collins?
Sure. The only thing I had was, um, the rep committee and they're, were planning, getting ready to plan their, uh, lighting of the tree, um, stuff on, um, this.
That December tenth, day after the community center's gonna
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right.
Yeah, so December tenth.
Perfect. Yes.
Yep.
December tenth.
I heard it'll be a Santa site.
Um, and that's really all I've got right there. Yeah, that's the only thing I did.
Bronwyn or Rich?
Uh, the Harbor Committee met, which is an event in itself. And, uh, they are meeting again in January. The big, the, the, the big discussion at that meeting was about inspection of moorings. And they decided not to require, not to amend the ordinance to require inspections. They had looked at, Woody had looked at a number of different, uh, towns and their regulations. Um, which are very greatly about what, how often, who does it, uh, what the requirements for reporting are. On the other hand, they agreed that it was important to expect, inspect moorings every so often, especially since we have a lot of moorings in Georgetown that are quite old. And nobody knows what's holding the, you know, what's anchoring it or if it's intact. So the goal is education in that area to include in the registration for your mooring. Um, a notice that you should be inspecting it. And also they decided it would be a good idea to return to a previous practice of issuing stickers. Um, for the mooring when you register, when you pay your mooring fee, that you would get a sticker with the year on it and the number of your mooring. So that's something that they want to talk to Alex about. And they're also interested in learning more about the proposed change of allowing the select board to set fees and when that will take place and how that will be implemented. Solid Waste met. You have a letter from them with their concerns about the incident that was not previously discussed at a select board meeting, but was reported in an incident report. And Conservation met and, um, they had a great potluck. They have some ideas about improving it for next year. And they're very excited about noodles, nurdles. I think they're called nurdles. And if you can find out what that is, you can join the discussion. There will be some, something in the tide about a nurdles presentation, which is about climate change and the oceans. That's it from me.
All right. Okay, uh, just liaison updates. As you are all aware, um, there was a Board of Appeals meeting today. Ole has stepped down as the chair. Uh, Roger nominated Aria for, to be the new chair, Garrett to stay as the, uh, um, secretary and that was passed. So we have a new Board of Appeals, uh, chairman, chairperson. That's Aria. Congratulations. And I would recommend that, uh, the Board of Selectmen get a card for Ole thanking him for his service to the town. He'd spent a lot of time on the Board of Appeals. Um, Ole's still on the Board of Appeals and, uh, he's, he's been dedicated to Georgetown for a long time and I think we need to, uh, to let people know that.
And especially, he will appreciate that. Thank you, Rich.
And now we're into the updates. If there are things non liaison related.
I've got nothing.
Were there any, Rich?
We have, Mary, um, as she just said, on the nights we're having the town, um, the meals, the Christmas holiday meal. Tyler is going to be, um, on the lookout for Santa Claus and he may, he's, I know he's gonna leave the GCC and when he comes back, well, we'll be there. Um, so I hope Santa and Tyler are seen at the same time. I'm not sure if that'll happen. Uh, the sixteenth of December is the Community Center Holiday Baskets. And if anyone in our audience knows of any neighbors, um, that we can help, uh, reach out to me, Angie, uh, Mark Donovan, Diane or Mary, and, uh, we will make sure that, uh, they're taken care of. Something special we do here in Georgetown and, uh, that's gonna be the sixteenth of December. Mary, if I'm wrong, please correct.
You're right. Yep, that's good.
And I think those are the only updates I have in the board.
I have none. Haven't, haven't been there.
Awesome. And so now we're back into old business. The next item, because we'll be tackling the rest of mill rates at the next meeting, is the retroactive appointment of Sharon Tribona as warden for the November eighth election.
I move that we appoint Sharon Tribona as retroactive warden of the previous election.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joan. Any discussion?
And
and Rich is in favor, all of them are in favor?
I'm in favor. Yep.
Three to oh. And the next item after that would be the retroactive appointment of Catherine Collins as an election clerk for that same election.
So moved.
Well, second it. I don't have to accuse myself, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Three to oh. Perfect. Under new business, I had added, there had been some discussion about replacing the town administrator's computer here at the office. Quite literally, right now, the computer we have moves at the speed of the glaciers. It takes significant time to get email up and running. And for the last, I would say, four months, Mary has been on my case about getting a new computer, but I am frugal and have tried to get this one over the finish line and it is not working.
I think it's there, Tyler. It's, it's done it.
Yes.
You know, it's retiring.
And
Just pre-tie it.
We are
Send it home.
I, so what I was hoping was to get a motion from the board to approve, you know, the purchase of a new computer for that station. Just by way of budget, I'm looking in something similar to You know, the purchase of a new computer for that station, just by way of budget, I'm looking in something similar to Mary's setup. Which went through our I T folks. Mary's had a few more bells and whistles than I had. Or than I need, and that came out to around fourteen hundred dollars. So I just wanted to give good background.
And I assume that we have an indication from Mary of where that fourteen hundred will come from.
Yes, yes. We have, we have, do have money put aside for replacement. Yes.
So I move that we replace the town administrator's computer. With all the bells and whistles that might be necessary because it's the essential hub of the town.
I'll second it.
And then seconded by Joan. Any discussion? All in favor? And Rich?
Yeah, in favor, Tyler.
Perfect.
Thanks.
It was muted. So after that, I believe that completes our business, save the executive session.
Uh, do we need to do public comments?
Oh, yes, there's one more public comment and then.
Is there any public comment here before we go on? Aria. Aria, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It was a very interesting meeting. Uh, so, um, definitely appreciate that. And, uh, just as a follow-up, John, thank you for your rec committee report. Um. Also on, uh, in December as part of the holiday, um, celebrations on the sixteenth at the G C C. Besides what y'all are already doing, um, that day, there's going to be a cookie and ornament exchange. And so, uh, that will happen, um, at the G C C itself. And that's a week after our, um, holiday on the harbor at the Wharf event with the tree lighting. And thank you to the Tribonas for donating the tree. We're going to come take over your property, probably on Thanksgiving, Bob and Sharon. So. You know, set a couple of extra plates at the table. I'm teasing. Um, all right. So, uh, thank you for including, um, the rec committee. Uh, in your announcements as well as all the other important work that other committees like Conservation and Age Friendly are doing too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um.
Yeah, a couple of quick things, uh. First off, there is no good time to increase a person's tax bill, no matter what you do. So I don't think it makes too much difference whether you do it this year or next year. Um, if I understood correctly, the discussion. You're going to put off the reassessment until next year. Uh, and if I understand the goings on correctly. That means that we are going to see for the people that have exemptions. Of any form, that's going to be basically an incre- a double increase for those people. Because one is going to be an increase in the overall tax budget. So. They would see an increase in their tax bill based on the amount of funds that need to be raised. But two, for those people that have exemptions, their exemption is going to be worth less. So that's going to be another increase in their tax bill. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, now.
I think that's not clear, but maybe.
Okay. Now, the, I assume, I don't know for a fact, but I assume that the. Board of Selectmen has had the, uh. Reassessed values available to them. Uh, so that they could take a look at them to help them make their decision. Uh, I, I guess I would ask, has anybody on the select board taken a look at their own personal property? And made a, an assessment, if you will, as to what the impact is on their personal tax bill. Uh, by. Holding off on a reassessment for a year or including it this year. Would the percentage of your tax bill go up more or less? And I, I, I'm not looking for an answer on that. But I would hope that, that in order for you to make a, a, a good, uh, evaluation. As to which way you should go, that you would have done something like that. Um. And. I guess that's really about it, except to say that. Thank you, Ole, for all your service and all the things that you've done for the town over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything? Chris for Chris?
Yeah, I would just like to commend you guys for putting in the effort on this, uh, tax evaluation. Um. Sitting here, I can appreciate both Rich's opinion and the opinion of Bronwyn and John. Um, ultimately, I tend, I'm, I'm on the fence, but I tend to agree with Bronwyn and John just for the sake of. You know, it seems like tax bills are already running a little late this year. And from the outside taxpayer who doesn't really know any of this is going on, the whole thing might seem a bit rushed. And so I, I, I commend you guys for the, bringing the taxpayers up to speed before this is done. Um, and of course, any more sales that we can gather as a baseline, even though there are very few sales in Georgetown. Might help to hone that, what that increase actually is in assessments to, uh. To, you know, get it right, uh, or as right as it can be. So, you know, although it's a tough decision, I think it's, I think you guys made the right one. Um, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is anybody else? Seeing none. Okay, seeing none. I think, uh. We're going to move, uh, make a motion for executive session pursuant to one M S R. M R S A, section four oh five, section six, section A. I'm moving your executive session to discuss personal matter and we will, right, you need a motion and then we need to, uh, get everything done here, right?
So that was.
I'll, I'll see you folks tomorrow. I need a motion. So I need a second, I guess, then.
Absolutely a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
All right.
Bronwyn or?
I'm not in favor, but it doesn't matter.
Two to one.
Okay, so now we'll say.
All right.
Goodbye to everybody.
If folks would. Leave the meeting, we can make this a secure setting. And there's this button pause that we can use this time. Remember the last time we did, we just had the.
Yes.
All right, we've got Sandy is gone. It's just the three of us. I adjourn.
Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Happy Thanksgiving.
Right.
Seven. Adjournment.
Adjourned.
All right, thank you.